The agenda tonight is some discussions on some of the projects. And if you look at it, you see Cy is here tonight in his lovely way. So we'll do them second, but the residents at Raleigh Country Club, based on the projects that they've made. And Larry's not able to attend tonight, but has done his inspection, I guess you have any contact? The memo dated January 14th. As you know, we're holding a tripartite agreement with surety in the amount of 155,350. Larry's memo suggests that the surety could be reduced by 98,50 to the 57, which reflects what needs to be done in site plan conditions, including contingency and prevailing wage rate factor of 30 percent. And you said you have seen it.
I've looked it over, and it seems like the progress is consistent with what Larry is saying needs to be done there if they move along.
The request by the developer to reduce the surety in Phase 1 means 1 through 6, 23 to 36. There are many improvements for cost at Phase 1 for surety should be elders follows paving the top course, $31,000, Entrance Island, $2,000 signage, $2,000 fire access road gate, $13,500. The has-built plan, $7,500, which is adequate for that. $43,850 contingency prevailing wage rate factors, 13,150 to 12,57. You have any comments, Kirk? Anything to add?
Pretty much straightforward.
Any other discussion?
They want this money back in their pockets, that's what you're saying?
Yeah, that's exactly.
Are they hurting for money?
Well, it's kind of a typical procedural thing.
Well, I think they should, I think it should stay there till the whole project is done.
Well, as, I mean, we really don't have, oh, you want to comment on that? We really don't have a right to hold it if it's done.
You don't have a right to?
Well...
Why talk about it?
Well, no, you're...
It's a former request.
You're supposed to hold what would be necessary to complete the project with, you know, provisions for, you know, contingencies or whatever, you know?
All right, well, how do you know 57,000 is enough?
Well, because Larry did the study, and he's been monitoring the project, and he sees these things that we were holding money for previously have been completed, so we can scratch them off the list. And based on what he sees needs to be completed, he's estimating that the amount that should be held is consistent with their request.
Well, if the project is going so well and everything's already sold, I mean, you know, what kind of does make the money sit there, you know? I mean...
Well, it's an interesting perspective, but like I said, we really, you know, they make the request, and if the work's done...
We can only hold it so long as the work isn't complete, then where is this?
And it goes by the phases. I mean, we can, in the next phase, if there are changes in the project that dictate that we need to take additional surety, that we have the right to do that as well. You know what I mean? So he's at this point.
I feel comfortable if there was at least $100,000 in there. In case, you know, prices go up or something.
But that's why, that's why there is a contingency. Well, I don't, I mean, in this case, I think we can feel pretty comfortable as a board that the surety is not going to have to be used by anyone, any outside party to have to finish the project. I can't say that about every project, but...
Well, let's hold the bag on one project, don't we?
Well, we, you know...
The town, the ratepayers of the town have to pay for the bill for one project, right?
No.
Who pays for that, then? The guy who took off?
No, we, there's money there, there is a, there is a differential in town, depending on how it comes in on the total cost.
It's still ain't enough, though.
But I would agree with Steve that we got to make sure that we're holding adequate a surety. In that instance, I think a lot of things went beyond the board, and 10 years passed before they took another look at it, and for that reason, you know, the estimate was never revisited, the amount of surety was never considered again, and over time became inadequate. But I think in this case, we're, it's contemporaneous, we know what they're doing, they've completed everything, scratched it off the list, and what they're looking, what we're looking for them to maintain is adequate, is what they're willing, what they're willing to keep an escrow as adequate.
Yeah, and as a complete items, I mean, I think there should be, normally should be a reduction of some sort, you know, you know, equivalent to the value of those items. I mean, it's a process we follow, and, you know, we rely on Larry Graham's professional opinion to make those determinations, and, you know, he really hasn't done us wrong over the years.
Oh, I understand, but, you know...
But I understand what you're saying, and, you know...
There has been some projects in the past...
Of course there has, you know, anything is subject to change.
No, where, you're right, I mean, surety, I think we're much more cautious now, we're much more systematic about how we engage Larry and how the developer pays Larry, you know, through the consulting fee to have this done. I think in the past, there were some gaps.
Right, yeah, and, you know, and I don't have any balance with the guy, you know, I think he's doing a great job at everything down there, everything seems to be going well, everything's selling, and he's right on top of everything, and he's done everything he said, and if everything is so well, I mean, you know, I wouldn't think $100,000 would hurt him to leave it in there.
For what reason?
The town's protection, the protection of the ratepayers, I mean, you know, anything's subject to change, like I said, you know, and I mean, you know...
I mean, I think we're constrained by the bylaws, which say we can only hold surety for the work that's remaining incomplete, so where the estimates are adequate to cover the work that needs to be completed, we can't, you know, go beyond the bylaw and for, I guess, not quite arbitrary, but for discretionary reasons, increase, increase the amount that we can ask them to hold.
And that's why this list starts out as a very, very comprehensive big list of things, and as things get done, it gets narrower and narrower. And this is for site plan, I mean, we're not, we're holding it for private, basically for the site plan.
Well, it seems like there's still quite a bit of work to be done down there, I mean, there's, how many units are built, and how many more do they have to do? Quite a few, right?
Yeah, this is Phase 2, yeah. Over half are built.
But we're only securing the completion of the infrastructure, not the buildings.
Right.
And that infrastructure is...
This is for site...
Landscape, I understand.
This is site plan.
Yeah, yeah, well, you know...
$7,500.
Actually, you know, I, I mean, Larry's number is, you know, probably a better estimate. I'm surprised that the signage is only $2,000, given the cost of signage, but that being said, Larry thinks that's an adequate sum, so for that reason...
Because some of it's already up, that's why. That's the remaining.
I guess, I've looked at the plan, is this the signage at the second entrance or the first entrance?
I think to complete the first.
Entrance Island, two green, you know, I mean, you know, you don't know the size of all these islands or the size of...
No, Larry does.
Yeah.
We do, we do know the size.
Right to the, right to the inch.
Yeah, and that's what Larry's considering when he's giving his opinion.
And I've been, he's been out there numerous times, and I've been out there with him twice. All right, you want to comment on this?
Yeah.
Just introduce who you are, please.
Do you want me to stand or...
Whatever you would like.
Okay. Melissa Alden, I'm here for the residents at Raleigh Country Club.
And your, okay, and your position?
And I'm requesting a...
But your position?
Oh, I'm an attorney.
Okay.
Requesting reduction.
With who?
Oh, with Man and Man, I'm sorry.
Just so, for the minute.
Yep.
I'm sorry, what happened?
Melissa Alden, attorney with Man and Man.
How you spell your last name?
O G D E N.
Okay.
And we're just requesting the reduction of the bond to $57,000 in accordance with Larry's memo of January 14th, and I don't know if you all have a copy of our letter?
We do.
I have a copy.
The letter is dated today.
Yes. This is an adequate reduction.
Yeah, it's also dictated, and this is the Form S, Steve, if you ever went on that, which writes Mass General Laws, Chapter 41, Section A1U, Form S, which dictates kind of like...
It's the second page of the cover letter.
It's a three, the way you deal with tripartite agreements in respect to projects and planning boards. You want to summarize it?
Essentially, when we agreed to have the bank hold the money through the tripartite agreement for work that wasn't complete when it first became before the board in order to release the units so we could sell them, now we've completed more of the work and we're just requesting a reduction of the bond.
In terms of the legal perspective, because Steve asked, you know, I think valid questions.
Yeah, I mean...
Being a newer member on the board, I think...
The statute just requires the town to hold, or enter into agreement to hold the monies to ensure the completion of the work because of our asking for release from the covenant, so it's our right to request a reduction when the work's been completed and we can prove the same.
That's between, between the mortgagee...
Yep.
The town and the bank.
And I gave a copy of the original tripartite agreement, which showed that it was originally
Which is Exhibit A in Form S.
Yep.
Which includes a 30 percent contingency factor, so, you know, I don't think that particular factor is mandated by law, I think it could probably be lower or higher, but, you know, personally, I'm satisfied that, number one, I'm satisfied that Larry Graham has looked at this, and he's, he's willing to sign off in his professional opinion on these estimates, and I'm satisfied with the contingency of 30 percent to cover any unforeseen conditions. So, you know, I think this is something we can improve.
So at least there's a contingency in there, Steve, you know?
Is that we do it for the board, or do we do it for them?
No, just for the board.
I mean...
Absolutely. So he, you know, he's signed off, so he's putting his professional, you know, reputation online, so, and, you know, as I said, this is the process we follow, and, yes, you go back a long ways, you can find instances where the amount hasn't been enough, particularly in subdivisions, though, not in the state of development. You know, I think it's worked pretty well recently.
And I think as a board now, we're more, I think as a board, as a group, we're more sensitive, and we'll try to make sure.
More than half the projects complete, and we've either sold or put under agreement about two-thirds of the units.
Steve asked how many more need to be built?
Um, we, sixteen, which has, some of those are under completion, or under construction.
Sixteen more duplexes, or a total of eight more?
Total of eight more.
Total of eight more.
Yeah, but some of those are under construction.
Other words, foundations are...
Yeah.
And how many are under agreement?
Um, it's 27, I believe.
Or sold.
Yeah, or so, 27 out of 36 have been either sold or put under agreement. The number fluctuates on a monthly basis, based on the reservations.
Yeah, the project's going very well.
Yeah.
But I kind of think we shouldn't even consider that factor in viewing this, because we should just go based on the numbers.
That's more just an FYI.
Yeah, right.
Because it's not really...
But so irregardless of what, how the project's doing, which happens to be very well, it seems to me Larry's, you know, certified that these amounts are adequate, plus city contingency, so I think we ought to prove it.
All right, any other information, comments? So I entertain a motion to reduce the surety for 155,350 to 57,000.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by, appears second.
I'll second.
Jean, what was the family?
Hi.
All opposed?
Opposed.
So that's one, two, three, four, want to vote? Kind of, really, really formal?
No.
I do have a Form S. Your signature.
I mean, one more question, according to Form S, it doesn't matter anyways, because they're entitled to their money back, right? If the work is done?
Correct.
So why are you coming in to ask this?
We need your approval because...
Well, we have to determine that the amount is adequate for the work that's remaining.
And we have to also verify by vote and by actual appearance. She has to make an appearance, they have to make a formal request, we actually have to see this. If there's any discrepancy in the paperwork or in Larry's report doesn't sync with their request, his report has to sync with this request, and if it doesn't, then we can't do an affirmative vote, you know?
I think it's just in all, in the years since we've tried to, you know, make sure that the developments with the OSIDs go through correctly, where we've started in the last few years to focus more critically on everything, so we need to know exactly what's being released for our own benefit, to keep us from getting into difficulties that we might have had in the past with long-term projects that never actually get done, or people disappear, or that kind of thing.
Well, not just that, my sentiments are, because, you know, I was in the construction business my whole life, and I seen prices double, I mean, I seen concrete go from $50 a yard to $125 a yard, I mean, you know, and it's, who knows where the economy's going? And that's why I'm saying, you know, the product is going well, they're making money, they're doing well, so that's why I'm saying that, you know, $100,000, it's not asking too much, I don't think, to leave it in there. Yeah, is, are they entitled to that, more money back? Yeah, they are, yeah. You know, just, just for good faith, you know what I'm saying?
I think what you're, what maybe you're asking for is for a larger contingency of 30 percent, that is a matter of policy, the board should require, I don't know, maybe 40.
I'm not saying the board, well, just ask it.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I think that's a legitimate point, but...
No, I mean, I've seen, I mean, I've been at enough construction to, I mean...
I mean, if the job is going well, I don't think, I don't think $43,000 is going to hurt if they keep it, keep it on the table here.
But typically, in a, typically when this job has a beginning and an end, and it has an end date that's planned by the developer, then you can kind of keep those costs within a range in the budget, and I think Larry takes that into consideration. I think it's much more difficult in road projects that go on for 10 years or 20 years, to me. You start taking surety, you know, 20 years ago. It has to be revised on a consistent basis.
Yeah, a lot of things could change in six months, I mean, this is, this project's got to go forward, what, nine more months?
Till the end, I guess, it's planned to be finished by November, December, this coming year.
Probably next...
August, yeah, yeah. So I think 30 percent between now and August is pretty, you know, is pretty reasonable. Based on what I see, what needs to be done, there's nothing that's as volatile.
Well, it's up to you guys, I mean, I'm...
No, it's volatile, but I mean, paving, if it's done in a, you know, it's more volatile because of a seasonal thing, if you have to rush and do it in the wintertime.
You don't go with that, asphalt, asphalt is...
It fluctuates based, you know, based on the plants, you know, that's...
No, nobody knows better than I, I'll show you that.
No, that's true. It's a good question, I guess.
Four minutes.
Did you get...
I...
One, two, three, four. Any questions on the, for the minutes, Kirk?
I think I did sign all of them.
Okay.
All right, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Good luck. Speaking of, speaking of tripartite agreements, I think this is kind of a, one, I think Kirk, Kirk has been involved in this, Kirk Baker is our new planner, you met?
Yes, yes.
Okay, good. We're looking for, I don't think we can solve, put all the pieces of the puzzle together tonight, but looking for a way, or to assist in any way, in getting Cindy Lane as an accepted road in the spring town meeting. As we know, we're already setting him, you know, towards the end of January, town meeting is in May, usually, right?
Yes, I think it's in May, I expect at least.
There are pieces of the puzzle in terms of the requirements for road acceptance.
That's just...
And I want to, you know, we'll listen to Cy and listen to Kirk, but I think as a board, you know, maybe one other member, myself and Kirk, maybe other party, relevant parties, like Ron at the Highway Department, if necessary, Brent at Conservation Commission, maybe should meet, and we should have, I think, a very, a detailed and specific roadmap and requirements, you know, to get it done, so that we don't, you know, miss anything, and so we don't get in a position where we're rushing this through in a way that we're putting it on the warrant, but it really shouldn't be on the warrant, it's a waste of time. So time is short, but I'm just beginning to learn where we're at. This came as a result, you know, I guess, over some, how long has Cindy Lane been there? It's been there a while, right?
I like what...
All the houses are built, right?
Twenty years.
Yeah, so 20 years. So way back, was anybody on the board then when we...
No.
The certificate of vote?
Not from the beginning.
No.
Nobody, of course, we would hope not. So there is, again, there's an order, there's a conditions, you know, certificate of vote with conditions, again, the things that need to be done for that road, for it to be accepted. And John Moore from Navy Associates is what, the consulting engineer?
Vote for the town.
Right, so instead of Larry, Larry doesn't do this project because he has to recuse himself on this one, but, so John does it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
Well, in recent years, we've had, we've had other people to...
Right, right, so we do, the town is, so I think when, during the winter weather, the selectmen realized that what, the road was being plowed by the town, but it's, from liability perspective, whatever, it's not an accepted town road, so the town's really not supposed to plow it.
Well, has the town been plowing it regularly for the past...
I don't know how, I don't know how long, I don't know.
For about 10 years.
10 years the town's been doing it?
About 10 years.
It pays, but I'm all in.
Yeah, so I'm not going to speculate as to what, all I know is where we are now and where we need to go. So, I mean, I know the project, I know the project for a long time because of the Conservation Act, the commission aspects of it. So you want to fill in, you met, so where are we at now?
When the last two houses just completed?
Yes, but the road was finished about 18 years ago.
Final call, final...
Yes.
So Wilkes Road has already been accepted as a town road, right?
Correct.
Bell Circle, no, right?
Well, Bell Circle was finished, but it is associated with...
With Cindy Lane, so, so Bell Circle and Cindy Lane are not accepted, and those are the ones that connect with Wilkes Road, right, and also connects with the so-called end of Wilson Pond Lane.
Is Wilkes off Newbury? Is that Wilkes?
Yes, no, off Isabel Circuit, is that Isabel Circuit? Wilkes goes into Isabel Circuit, okay.
Go Harrison Circuit.
Harrison Circuit, I get my circuit.
Then is that a transitive, is that a transitive Wilkes?
So the thing is, well, Cy, why don't you just briefly, I don't want to get into the whole, I want us to go forward and kind of help you as a board, and we're having a new planner, as a group, you know, how can we set a timeline to get certain tasks either completed or realize that we can't get them completed? I believe the warrant, you're more familiar with this, on a special town meeting.
This is Wilkes, yeah.
This is Wilkes.
This is Wilkes, yeah.
The regular warrant goes in, right, February?
Yeah.
Yeah, February, the regular warrant stuff goes in in February, special town meeting can wait somewhat longer to get it on the warrant for a vote by the townspeople.
Well, we...
Well, is everything, is everything completed?
Is everything completed?
And Cindy Lane and Bell Circuit, yes.
So everything's done?
Yes.
Oh, okay, well, that's good news.
Can I say something?
Of course.
I think the problem always was the easement, and in reality, the easement is not part of Cindy Lane, I mean, the easement is given to Cindy Lane, and it was confirmed by...
What she, what she means is a connection between Wilson Pond Lane and Harrison.
Yes, in reality, in my opinion, it shouldn't impair taking the street, since we are having an access to Wilkes, so it should be fine.
Yeah, but that's, that's really, you know...
That's why we are committed.
Town council, I mean, I, that's beyond my legal expertise, I mean, that was, been in litigation for 20 years, right? No, 15.
Well, I think...
The litigation is, was already done and the court, after sixty-five pages of writing, accepted the easement as valid.
This.
We had a valid easement.
I'm sorry, but I think your initial reaction is the correct one, that that's, this is for town council to figure out and I don't think we should spend all night trying to.
No, I'm not going to, that's why I think a road act, just as a group, to vote to continue the process and maybe have a meeting. From Ron, I need to know from the certificate of vote, first we need, I think, to veri, don't you think we need to verify that everything's done?
Yeah, absolutely.
And we can do that by, one thing I need from you that I do know, that Mr. Moran, I believe, it was only like four hundred, less than five hundred bucks in the account for consulting. I think Moran at Nevey said a moderate amount for him to do some more work into this would be five hundred dollars. If you agree that, you've already heard that from me, right? So you know that. So, if I can get that agreement from you, John wants five hundred more dollars to do his work.
Yeah, I mean.
And that's based on email string from Kirk and John and the selectmen. And I don't even need to read, I mean, that's just what he wants.
In my opinion, I don't think we should even be discussing road acceptance until we get something from John Moran saying everything's done to.
Right. So I just.
To inform the site plan.
But I just kinda want, you know, the board's blessing that we can go forward on this and maybe help in any way we can.
Mr. Moran already accepted the whole thing and what was not done, he had it in the tripartite agreement and the money is there for whatever is needed and that was about six, seven years ago or even.
But we need to, we're at the point where we're, I wanna help you to get this on the warrant and get it done.
Okay.
Okay, whatever it takes, we're gonna try to.
Who's Morris?
Morris.
The Nevey Moran group down there on Route One? So.
He's our consultant in this.
So dear board members, blah, 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 that's the old one.
So you're saying that the tripartite agreement is still in existence and, okay. Wasn't it supposed to expire?
It's like.
With Phil Savingsman?
No, it's expiring in, in February.
Okay.
Right?
Yes, yeah, it's actually on the agenda at the bottom of the document.
It's expiring in February, right?
Well, John Moran is, I just talked to him today, he is working on.
I wanna hear your report now.
Well, he's gonna be submitting, like, very soon he's gonna be submitting or a renewal of the bond, so he's been working on that.
So he's, so he's looking at what's done and what's not been done and how much it would cost to complete it, but you're saying everything's done, so I'm just.
Well, that. When we were here about five months ago, you asked whether the money is sufficient enough.
Right.
And you said at that time you would be writing to Mr. Moran, I mean, the board will write to Mr. Moran to get his input, how much it will cost. And you must have a copy of that, don't you?
No, it's just, it's just five hundred dollars. That's what he asked for.
He needs money to do, to do a complete study, is what the chairman decided.
So, he'll move forward. He's not gonna move forward when all that's left in the account is four hundred and seventy-three bucks. I mean, an engineer's.
You want them at five hundred dollars?
Yeah, that's what it should be, yeah.
I have it. Can I understand because I don't understand.
We want, we want, well, we're back to what Cliff said, we want Mr. Moran, who's, okay, to go forward so that he can give a recommendation prior to the expiration of the, you talked, I'll never, the expiration of the bond, so, to renew the bond up until the point that the road gets accepted, okay, finalized, up to the point that we receive, for example, an ASBIL, because we don't have an ASBIL yet. And we'll go over this, I mean, I wanna meet, I think it's important, and you can come in, if you can come in during a day ever.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
If he wants me to come in.
Kirk, myself, you, and maybe Ron from the Highway Department, you can set up a meeting. And we'll just make sure that everybody's on the same page.
Well, when they want.
At the same time, it said that Mr. Moran is going to be submitting a new reduction estimate in the next few weeks, you know, we need to make that more concrete, the next few weeks is kinda nebulous, so I mean, like, how is he gonna get that done?
Before he said today, I think it's gonna be next.
Right. And that, again, will reflect the, what we just went through. You know, bond reduction is based on what is done or needs to be done. I think we'll find that it's done because, you know, Cy knows his project, but, again, we have to have the engineer say that to us.
We've just been dragging on, it seems like, for a long time, huh?
I should probably point out, there's a couple of complications.
All right, you wanna hear it? Just listen, I'll tell you.
That we may have to, like, consider, well, one is actually the, you may, are, you're probably aware of this, that there was an order of conditions from the Concom here in Rowley that was appealed, that had to do with that connector section from Wilk, was it Wilson Farm?
Wilson Pond.
Wilson Pond to Cindy Lane. And you go out there at the end of that cul-de-sac bowl, where you see it now, there's about eighty, maybe a sixty, eighty-foot section that doesn't really have a top code on it right now. So, that, that's actually the portion that's being.
So how can we say that, that everything's been done?
Well, so the Concom's gonna be involved too then.
Well, we just heard that.
Right, we just heard that.
We just heard that everything.
She's disasserting it legally.
Yeah, because I think Cindy Lane is not part of the easement, Cindy Lane is separate, if you forget the easement.
No, we're not gonna forget the easement.
Okay, if you just take Cindy Lane as is and make it accessible to Wilkes Road, we are all set, the easement is out of it and, but we are still bound by the apartheid agreement and everything you want to put on us, it's fine because that is the way it is. But I mean, in reality, the easement is not part of Cindy Lane.
It's a connection with.
Yeah, but you see, as you accepted Wilson Pond on one side, why not accepting Cindy Lane and have access to Wilkes Road as simple as this?
I'm absolutely opposed to that. Absolutely opposed to that.
Well, what we need, this is where, there's no sense in getting into it now.
Right.
This is why we need to meet, at this time we'll engage town council, take a look at the documents, you can have your counsel, because you have, like you said, sixty-five pages of court decisions. And it's beyond my.
They have, you have the.
Well, I know, but I'm not up to speed on it because it's been going on so long. I am familiar with the order conditions, I need to get Brent, I need to see, I need to see, and I need to know, I need to know, I'm not disputing what you're saying, I'm not disputing what anybody's saying, but I need to know who's responsible for finishing that. I know we've had that discussion here before, what it's gonna cost. The question that you're saying, you're saying you're gonna finish that at some point, right? That connector, but you don't want it connected to the acceptance of Cindy Lane, right? You want it.
So you wanna maintain that that is a private.
Because we have the apartheid agreement to guarantee that we are doing that, we have the money with that.
Well, you're right, we did the line of credit thing, we did that. But the question is whether or not, the question for me is whether or not that legally, those can be, you know. I gotta, I gotta look at the plan too, and I don't know what.
Concom's gonna have to sign off on it first anyway, see?
Right.
I would think.
I mean, that's, is that what Brent said?
Before it goes anywhere.
Where's the appeal?
What?
Where's the appeal? What's, what's, where is the appeal at? We heard you.
Well, we have two things here, whether the easement is valid or not valid. The easement was confirmed by the court.
Is that Palm House?
Yeah, no, this one.
Can you, do you mind if I ask a, whom granted the easement? Who should have granted the, why was it in litigation? I mean, was it?
Well, because we have the.
This is what we don't wanna get into, I suppose.
No, you can ask.
But I do wanna get factual background on this.
The easement to come here.
Yes.
Was signed by the people here twenty-five years ago.
I see.
When we came to build this one, they said, we refuse to give you the easement. And we had to go to court to confirm that the easement is valid.
I see.
And we went to court and after seven, eight days of questioning.
This was, excuse me for interrupting, but this was about, this was about ten years ago, right?
More than ten years.
More than ten, yeah.
And the easement was confirmed by the judge and written in full details. Now, we went ahead and we came here, the planning board gave us the crossing here and that was valid. The Conservation Commission gave us the way and the order of conditions to do it. However, the same group went ahead and appealed the easement. And appealed the court, the court approval. They withdrew their appeal of the court approval. So the easement has no appeal nor nothing.
Right.
The question is, they appealed the Conservation Commission border of condition and that is where we are. What we are claiming here is this.
So they're saying as interested parties, they're objecting to the order of conditions?
Of the Conservation Commission.
Oh, the Conservation Commission over the area that's covered by this easement, right? Now, this was ten or fifteen years ago.
Yeah, the question here is this, we are stating that Cindy Lane is an independent road from the easement, as Wilson Pond was independent in the past.
Because you're, and, and can I ask the board, when this subdivision permit was, was granted, was it by special permit, by site plan approval?
No, it was a subdivision.
Subdivision approval. Was this developer responsible for the development in, of the easement area?
Yes.
So that is covered by the, the bond.
So I have a bond on it.
Yeah, okay. But why are we not finishing? Why would you not, because the Conservation Commission has no authorization to do it?
The money is there, as Mr. Moran has estimated and had the cost, everything, the money is there here with the tripartite agreement.
All right. So you're asking us to release the bond except for that?
No, 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 don't raise the bond, keep the bond, just this, keep the money there. The only thing is, Cindy Lane is independent from the easement.
Where does this come out right here?
Well, a factor for me is.
Paper road.
It is.
Paper street.
Have to take into account.
Not even that.
This is nothing.
Is this Teddy Road right here?
They want Teddy Road.
That's Teddy Road? And it's in between where you come straight in.
No, you can't go.
You can't approve it regardless of the easement, if it is valid, forget the easement. This street has one access and it is eighteen hundred feet.
This is gonna be the highway?
It is, as you did with Wilson Pond. Wilson Pond was twenty-five hundred feet.
He has no plan for it.
And it was accepted as a good thing.
The honor of the.
Let us forget that and say, no easement, this is.
The honor of.
Until we figure out the easement, you have to.
You know, I think if we were to approve, you know, approve the subdivision in piecemeal and we approve the, the rest of the road where all the houses are located, that, that portion, the intersection with Wilson Pond Lane, will that ever be completed? I mean, it really seems to me it won't.
But the bond is there to.
We're holding the money.
We should have, we should have a lot of money in that bond.
You don't have a lot.
Well, I haven't seen anything from Mr. Moran.
This is one of the things, when I sit down, the meeting I want, this is all, I'm gonna leave it at this, I want the board to allow Mr. Moran, Ron from the Highway Department, you know, the interested party, maybe the chairman of the selectmen, we've gotta sit down so that everybody's on the same page.
I agree.
That all this, right, everybody's saying this and this, and at the same time, this can only happen also when we engage town council. I think we need to engage, and I think that's already in process.
I'd like town council to look at the status of the case, because, because I can't understand, I mean.
Yeah, Concom.
We have two lawyers here, I mean.
I've never seen litigation go this long where nothing happens, you know?
What it seems like, yeah.
We are very frustrated, I mean, look at us, we don't enjoy that and, you know, we want to finish it as soon as we can.
Well, it just doesn't, something is not right about this.
Well, no parties that are involved in anything, you don't enjoy it, the other party doesn't enjoy it either.
But in the meantime, you have all these homeowners who are kind of in the balance here.
What I wanna do is apply for it. I would like to make sure that we go through the process and try to tie this up within our legal, within our legal, you know.
I would think that, and I'm, you know, I'm speculating, I'm coming to a legal conclusion, but where the subdivision could, perfectly granted, whether it be twenty years ago or ten years ago, it's for the entire project, the entire project needs to be completed before the town would accept, you know, ninety-five percent of it.
It is completed.
But, well, it's not, it's tied up and it's not completed.
Well, I would think after all these years, everything's gonna have to be updated.
Well, that may be, but that's why we need a letter from John Moran, not a consulting engineer, certifying what's been done, what needs to be done and how much it's gonna cost with contingency factors, which should be very big in this case.
Oh, yeah.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
Yes, that's why, that's why we're engaged, and I have an email string, that's why you've spoken, now we're engaged.
There's a lot of people gonna be involved with this to make it right.
No, we're really engaged, I think, is that okay that we can, that Kirk, we have a plan or not?
I'm ready to meet that assignment with.
But I wanna have the appropriate parties.
But is it, just, all I need from you is one thing, what do I have to do more?
No, that's what the meeting's going to be about.
For the road to be accepted.
No, no, that's what the meeting's about, saying.
I think, I think the next course of action, and I don't need to jump in, but is to, is to get together with these guys, pay the additional five hundred dollar application fee so that we can pay the consultant.
Give that to Kirk, so you get, yeah.
Right, that's the first thing that needs to be done.
Well, yeah, let's give it, just get it to Kirk, it was a request from John, Mr. Moran.
When will the meeting be?
Well, based on Mr. Moran, believe me, I'm in contact with the planner all the time, right?
I'll contact.
And I'll, and I'll have, when I'm in contact with him.
Just, just so the other board members know, this map really isn't accurate.
Okay.
From here to here, it shows a road going like that, that was a subdivision that was approved but then rejected, so there's no road there. So basically.
Oh, is that the one he's calling, that's this one?
The road comes off of Harrison, it's approved, I think, up to here, Wilkes Road.
It stops right here, this little cliff, this cliff's in right here.
Right there, okay.
And then it goes on and it connects with Wilson Pond.
But you don't have this portion, this portion that loops up here.
Is that right cliff, it stops here?
Yeah.
All right.
And this thing here.
Kirk, is it possible you can pull the subdivision approval from whatever?
I already told him, he was looking.
Okay, yeah.
All right, so I, is that okay? I don't think we need to.
But we have money for the connection, so in my mind, the connection is part of the subdivision.
Yeah.
But I want John, John's gonna research this, Cy, we're gonna move as fast as we can.
Thank you very much.
Because I know the, I know the deadlines for.
Yes.
The warrant.
Thank you.
However, we have to, we can't, we can only move within the legal framework that has been laid out by the litigation, has been laid out by appeals to the, you know, order of conditions, and these are all legal issues.
Well, not really, because the first, again.
An appeal is a legal issue.
To beat a dead horse, the first thing we need to know is, we need to have a report from John Moran.
That Cindy Lane is finished and that also.
It's not finished.
No, and that, no, and that we need a report from the, now the acting director of the Highway Department, Ron, you met, what did he say?
Well, that was one of the things that, he, when, when we meet with him, he's going to point out that there are actually some, that the improvements are done, but there's actually been, I think they were done like three years ago, the last paving, but there's been some degradation since then. So there are cracks in the road, there are catch basins which are above grade, which are gonna be a problem, so.
Whatever is needed.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know Cy knows that routine because what happens, when people plow, you know, catch basin goes from here, you know, it goes from here to here.
Yeah, well, then, once we get that report, that seems like we can cover the plan from there.
How many dollars you want, five hundred?
Yeah, this is just to get John to do his thing.
Right.
Right.
First by the town of Rowley.
Yeah.
You could put it at the bottom, maybe what it's for, technical consulting fee.
Yeah.
Technical consulting fees.
January eleventh, we have the new construction numbers for the reconstruction of Cindy Lane and Wilson Pond intersection. We were going to put a new bond together, but before we do, I wanted to verify that the proposed bond reduction on eight seventeen oh nine was actually issued, be attached. Once we know that, we can submit. So this is all work, this is, this is on January eleventh, so this needs to be.
When is the, the bond expiring?
I thought it was here.
Yeah, February.
February twenty eighth.
Is that a date we need to be concerned with? Cause I don't know the answer to that question.
What happens if the bond expires?
Yeah. I mean, I've heard attorneys say different things, that it doesn't matter, that the obligation always runs. But I don't know, it does have an expiration date. I think maybe that's an issue we should ask town council about.
I don't know, so most of the time, Said, you've come in and requested extension. Sometimes it's been a few days late, but most, you always do that.
When was it issued?
When it was due that.
Oh, nine.
That should be, yeah, of course, that should be good.
We have been doing that for years.
Get that on the calendar too, so we can have that meeting.
If anything, the cost of building the road now is cheaper than it was six years ago.
Is that right? Steve, you, you go along with that?
What, for asphalt?
What we did, just.
Hey, watch your language.
Chris, Chris and Steve, just so you know, remember I said it was oh nine? But it was August, we granted, back in this, in August of this year, we granted a six month extension.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
To request, to get the cost estimate update for the remaining construction left on the site. The board wanted to know if the changes in construction costs for the last five years weren't consideration of requesting additional surety from the developer, that's what John's looking into right now.
Those are your comments.
But the trouble is, we only, we held four seventy-three twenty-four in the technical consultant account. So after John saw that, he requested the other, for never, as an engineer, requested another five hundred.
I mean, it sounds like it wasn't good communication at that point, because what we needed at that point was five hundred dollars, we could've had that report from Mr. Moore a while ago.
Yeah.
But we are aware.
Did he ask for?
Hey, you know, it takes, sometimes it takes a snowstorm to push us along, all right, so it did.
I agree with you, with the price of asphalt, it's more than that.
Oh, yeah.
But the rest of the place.
All right, so.
I don't build the road.
We're gonna, you know, I, you know, as long as I'm careful, I'm gonna try to help you.
Thank you, I just hope that I may.
Said, okay.
No, I live in.
And he'll be in touch, do you have all their information?
And we have.
Okay?
Thank you.
And feel free to check in by email or phone at eight nine. Do they know you're working on it?
You have that email, but it is a good idea to communicate by email.
You have your email, I don't have yours.
Then he'll shoot you.
I do have your phone.
Okay. So we're going to go onto the next item. Steve, unless, I'm gonna go on to the next item.
Thank you.
And we'll report to the selectmen, I'll have, I'll have Kirk. Said, I'm gonna have Kirk also, make sure we keep open dialogue with Debbie Hegan and the chairman of the selectmen as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay? You know, we're gonna be.
Have a good weekend.
Yeah, thanks.
We're gonna be communicating on this.
I am ready, I have the time, just.
All right, well, a lot of pieces have to fall together.
Okay, what are we going on?
Leave it at that, I don't know, since some, Kirk, Cliff, Cliff and Kirk are more up to date with this.
Good night, see you later.
Okay.
Thank you, Said.
Stay warm.
It's not your coat, is it your coat?
That's actually mine.
Oh, sorry, Chris.
That's okay.
All right, briefly, Kirk.
I'm gonna leave it somewhere eventually.
I want you to look at this now, Raleigh Village Green, some of those are affordable units and that, so they have.
Well, before we move on, I think, you know, the issue about the expiration of the bond, I think, you know, we shouldn't expose ourselves to, to, you know, liability.
We're not gonna let it expire.
Okay, but at the end of February, all right.
No, John's, if John says it's gonna be done by next week.
Okay, we need to, you know, make sure. We don't let that go by.
Is what Said is saying is that it's his intention to get that report from John and then complete the work? Or that he can't complete the work because he's waiting for appeal on the order conditions?
His intention is for us.
To help him get the, the remaining portion of the street accepted.
Us to make concrete with deadlines, okay? And part of this is pushed, I know, why do we, is a valid question, I don't even wanna go there.
Okay, so that's my own question.
In the sense that we're in the wintertime, we're trying to get it on the warrant. It impacts the school buses, it impacts the residences, and if there's any way we can make this concrete for something. I mean, part of I drop also is to be, I think, vigilant on developers, whoever they are. Or diligent to make them finish things, or to compel them to finish things. So if we can, you know.
This is the part that I was referring to before. Now we're really on top of developers and projects, like we've never been before, because of these things that should've been completed, and, and now we're like, you know, a thorn in our side because we can't move forward. We have this thing from the past dragging along behind us.
Well, they can move forward.
We have a plan, yeah.
That's us slowing down.
The burden as you imply is on the developer.
You know.
Without a doubt.
I'm just trying to protect the people of this town, you know, when I say hold money, by all means, you know.
Even in the last six months.
I don't wanna see the people of Donkey Car holding back. You, you, everybody here on this board's gonna have to pay.
There's too much, but I don't want any, Steve, this is not a blame, this is a, this is a call for action to see if we can make it concrete and to get every party satisfied, whether it's the Conservation Commission, whether it's the Highway Department, whether it's us, whether it's town, you know. If people are satisfied and things get done, then we can get it on the warrant. If it's not the case, then we can at least make it concrete as to why. One of the reasons I think the planning board stood back and remains somewhat of a outside party as this goes on for years and years is that the litigation went on, the planning board can't get involved, is that right?
Right, but the litigation has been going on for over two decades supposedly, and, you know, the last time we asked for a status report on what was actually going on in litigation, we got a non-answer, you know.
I was gonna say.
We get just generalities that didn't tell us anything, so I've never seen a case sit on the docket like this.
Town council has the case, I mean.
No, we're not a party to the case, but, you know, I, I think perhaps a town council could take a look at and see exactly where the litigation is.
Well, I think if the litigation has any impact on these easements and this and that, and the.
I don't think we're.
No, I don't think we are on this one.
Yeah.
Not this one.
But I can certainly look into that case, I mean, I won't, didn't walk over to the Superior Court and figure out what's going on, if I know, does somebody have the caption?
Well, there, there was a Superior Court case, which, as, as Mr. Abu Zar said, has been resolved.
And several prongs, yes.
But there was a case.
I mean, conservation, the order of conditions. No, because it is, you know, even though they're not a party to it, it involves the order that they made, and an interested party isn't a butter. Can you ask Conservation to, to see if you can find the name of the case?
Sure.
You would, you would think so.
You can ask that, you can ask Debbie Hegan once.
Kirk, if you get that information, I'll, you know, certainly just go down to the town, to the courthouse and pull what we need to look at.
Did it just sit on the Concom at that time when that was going on?
Yeah, but we weren't a party, yeah.
It was very unusual.
We weren't a party. Because what happened, you see the plan there? The parties involved in the other plan were sued to prevent that plan from ever happening.
I know there was a lot going on between every one of the different people.
The only thing I was a party to that I recall as chairman of the Concom was an appeal as to whether or not the bridge over, the bridge in Cindy Lane, that connect with the water course that connects with that Wilson Pond, was a river or not. You know, because we have the Riverfront Act, that two hundred foot setback would've impacted those four mailings.
So this is, this is Wilson Pond, though, right?
I think I got a valid point about the expiration date of that thing. You know, what is it, February twenty eighth? I hate to throw this rapid, you should keep a close eye on it.
Yeah, make sure that's read on your calendar.
Okay. Make sure that don't expire on us.
And your correspondence with John, make sure he knows that too. All right, can we get on this, please? Again, if you can explain in so many words or less, why this is even on the agenda?
Yeah, that's my question.
Basically, one of the, like, the second day that I was in the office, I got like an email from Janet Lesniak of DH, or DHTD in regards to an application for Raleigh Village Green, the local action unit application of which the, there were two, there were two affordable housing units associated with that development, one of which there was a request for local preference.
Listen to this, this is it, this is, forget the kind of complicated.
Yeah, and so with the application, the, the previous planner had submitted information in regards to, to support the argument for local preference for that, for that, for one of those units. And the information that was given with the application had to do with, it was an excerpt from the two thousand and seven Raleigh Affordable, Affordable Housing Unit Study. And that study, the excerpts that were used, that study actually references two thousand census data. So Janice Lesniak was reviewing the application and said that, that, that two thousand census data needed to be updated to the most recent census data. So that kind of created a problem because the, the study itself uses two thousand census data, so I didn't wanna, I didn't really have a source to replace the, the information that was originally provided. So I kinda had, had to, and this is what I've handed out to you guys, what I've been working on so far, went to the Census Bureau website and I've been manually going through and pulling out data that would support the argument for local preference. And I'm just, maybe this should've been further down on the list and not as, as a regular business item, but it's just to let you know what I'm, what I'm doing. I didn't necessarily wanna do a rewrite of the, of the two thousand and seven affordable housing study.
No, I don't think that.
But I would use that and the language in it to support the application and to answer Janice Lesniak's.
Well, can I ask, what, what does Janet want us to do?
Well.
If anything?
Basically.
She's reviewing an application for this local action unit, lift unit.
Yeah.
And she says it's based in part on old data, but what does she want us to do?
To update it, that's what I was doing, this, this new data right here, these tables.
You update the housing, the two thousand and seven housing study?
Well, the statistics that, that support the application, that was the problem, is that the, what was submitted with the application, I guess, was, was, was an excerpt from the housing study.
Okay, well, just.
But based on old data, but I'm not gonna rewrite, or I don't feel like I have a right to.
No.
To rewrite that study, but I can go and, and extract the data from Census Bureau, from the newest census.
Right.
The, the data that, the specific data that Janet, Janice Lesniak is asking for and then submitted to her.
Okay, so she's, she's hypo. She's asking for this data?
Yeah, yeah.
This more recent data?
Yeah, and she gave me some samples from other communities that, that did this local preference request. And I have been following those samples, and these tables are the data, the raw data that I put together that are going to go to support, to support that.
And it just has to do with whether someone gets a local preference or not?
Yeah, yeah.
So regardless of whether there's a local preference, the unit would still be approved as a.
The unit will still be affordable housing, it just, there's a chance that it may not be open to.
Well, I mean, seems to me we just give her the data that she's asking for, if that's all it is.
Yeah, and that's what this is, I'll, I'll write.
Is that all right? Have Kirk do that, just, I mean.
It's used to make sense.
I don't wanna start the whole thing over again.
No.
I mean.
The data, Steve.
Why is it a local preference, cause it's in our, it's in our, by, it's in our rules, right?
Yeah, you know, it's a good thing to do to.
It is, it's typical.
Yeah.
That helps with that, yeah.
And this, this would allow a teacher or a municipal employee to apply for it.
Exactly, exactly, like Ipswich does it, it's typical.
Yeah. So, yeah, just give her what she wants.
All right, at least she's working on it.
Yes.
It's good. In behalf of.
When's the unit gonna be available for?
Well, that's what we're trying to move to, the developers wanting.
Is this the one down Main Street?
Yeah, it was Steve Matzis, yeah.
So the lottery agent has been in contact with us to try to move it along, and it was actually through the lottery agent that I got this email in the first place. Because Janice Lesniak had sent it back to the lottery agent, lottery agent sent it to me. And they took care of most of the questions that, that.
Janet had.
Janet had with the, with that application, but the census data was filled into our.
All right, give her what she wants, okay?
So.
But you're, you understand, you're all over it.
Yeah, I just wanted to make, let's be clear with, that I was doing that, that I was, you know, I'll be tinkering with the original application and that section of the application I'll re-submit.
But as long as they know, as long as Steve Matzis know that, as long as they know what you're doing.
Yeah.
He knows what you're doing.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right.
I'll copy them all.
All right. So you get feedback from them before you submit to.
You should copy the selectmen too.
Selectmen, Debbie too.
Other than when it's available for auction or for lottery, doesn't, whether it's local action preference or, or not, it doesn't matter to the developer. You know, there's no difference in the consideration he's gonna get to the last.
I don't think so.
That's why it comes to us, because it's really the town's request.
Right.
Yeah, it's only a preference, it's only a preference, so if no one comes forward that fits the criteria, he can sell to someone else.
I see.
Within a certain.
Right, right, I understand, how is it preference, it must be some other eligibility for the remaining.
What's in there, what was in there?
Huh? Two, two.
Yeah, and we're trying to get one local, local preference.
Now, the one I look one, they had the same thing, they, you want to take a right, you know what the bone iron is? Before you get out of the car, you take a left and it goes into a development there.
Oh, Spencer Mills.
What is it?
Oh.
Spencer Mills.
Yeah, they, they had low income in there too.
Well, that's a forty B development, right? The whole thing is forty.
Oh, it is?
Well, it's twenty-five percent low income, but it's, it was approved under chapter forty B by the zoning board of appeals, this is something approved by the.
Yeah, the whole thing is forty, yeah.
And our requirement is that there be ten percent of the units be affordable. Which is why it's only two in this.
Right.
So it's a little different, but it's the same general.
We don't need to go over the report, have you sent it to people? What's that due?
It, technically it was due on Friday, but I talked to Hannah, she said I should let you guys take a look at it, and.
You don't wanna look at that right now?
Yes.
Does everybody have it?
Yep.
Uh, the report to the planning board? Did you find some of this information done previously by Katrina?
Yeah, I, I used Katrina's last report as a.
Right there, that shows, good, good use of time, there's no point reinventing the wheel, right? Yeah.
Of course, the, the projects are all updated, it's based on its past years, which Katrina was.
I mean.
That looks good to me.
The ongoing projects, what's not mentioned here necessarily is the work, the mitigation work that was done by Market Basket.
Yeah, that should, that should be included.
The planning board remains involved, we're not involved, it's just was completed, but you can still put that. I guess we're still involved.
Yeah.
You just wanna bullet that?
Yeah, which one?
Market Basket.
Just add it to.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go over it with you.
Okay.
Is that all right, that I had that?
Yeah, absolutely.
We spent a lot of time on that.
Yeah, we did.
Any other things that are omitted?
We wanna remind town council if we do that?
Any others that are omitted? That people see? Box number Wild Castle, residences, Raleigh Village Green. I don't see the, did we complete the downtown this year?
What is that, private driveway special?
Did we complete the downtown this year?
Uh, it looks like so.
Was that last year?
I would think so, yes.
All right. That was last year?
I'll do it for.
Yep.
As far as artistic landscape, we also did the site plan approval, right? This just states we did the eliminated sign, special permit.
No, what that says is just that we, we are now the special permit granting authority for signage. Are you talking about up here?
No, no, I'm talking about in the regulatory matters, it was completed in two thousand thirteen.
Yeah, but that's, that was regulatory.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, okay, yeah.
And the ongoing projects, private driveway special permit, we're on, on Cable Street, and on the government.
Do you have it here, I mean, along lines with what Chris is saying? Oh, it's on the top, granted site plan. Oh, it's on the top. Granted site plan.
Okay, there it is.
Might wanna move it so that they're clustered together. No, no, leave it up there. Those are kinda grouped in our main, by what we do in our major. We do site plan.
Site plan, okay, and.
Did we, um.
I just.
Were we missing any special permits that we granted? A special permit for the residences, country club. Have you scanned the minutes?
Mm-hmm. I went through the agendas and the minutes.
Okay.
The main of the agendas, I, I withdrew from the agendas.
That's exactly how, what you need to do.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it looks good.
All right, that's fine. So I have permission to tweak anything?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, uh, speaking of, now, you don't have a memo on your, uh, hours?
I.
It's on the agenda.
Yeah, I was just actually gonna tell you cause it was pretty. Uh, well, can I actually point, uh, cause under correspondence, I was actually going to, um, to say that I had correspondence from, um, Colleen Bailey, uh, with, um, with FEMA. Uh, the, she's the flood, flood hazard mapping coordinator with FEMA and, uh, she had actually submitted, actually it was in the agenda.
That's on there.
Yeah, the agenda packet, um, even though for some reason they didn't actually include it on the first. But she.
No, it's fine. You don't need to. You can, no, you don't need to.
Okay. But she had, uh, she's, um, indicating to us that it's time to revise the flood plane regulations, um, within the bylaw and, um, they are.
It's exhibit C.
They're looking to get on to the, um, you know, onto the town meeting, upcoming town meeting.
Yeah, this is, um.
And I assume ZRC.
Yeah, right. I wanted to bring this up, um, cause this is part of that, but we have a, the ZRC is going to meet next Tuesday night. And I wanted to bring up, um, three, I think three zoning changes that are all fairly simple, but things that need to be done. Uh, this, one of them is the changes to the flood plain, which is being, which are being requested and really mandated by the state.
Let's bring help someone.
Right. The second one is to allow for, uh, indoor athletic facilities. And the third one is.
Marijuana.
Marijuana. So, so the process is going to be, like it has in the past, is for the ZRC to, uh, make a recommendation that, to the selectmen, that the town move forward with these things and maybe some additional ones or, uh, and then, then the, the board of selectmen refers the issue to the planning board and we hold a public hearing. That's the process that we have to file.
Well, we can get them on in May.
Um, yeah, sure.
At least, yeah. I think it's important we get the athletic one on, right?
Absolutely. I always miss for the kids, you know.
Yeah, right. It's something that should be addressed and especially like even like a health club or health or fitness center. It's not, it's not really not authorized now, so we should, we should address that.
I mean, yeah, I say absolutely.
Dress that together, you know, so.
It should be top priority.
The flood plain has to be on in May because, um, just to make it clear, because it, it expires or, or, um, you know, involvement in the flood plain or the, uh, the, you know, flood plain program.
Yeah, the, uh, the national insurance.
The flood insurance.
Yeah, the flood insurance program, sorry.
We already had, we already had some hearings on that in the past when we did it last time.
Right, and this is another change. I haven't looked at it yet. I guess somebody's.
Am I right that we're, we're only participating in the national flood insurance program since about 2006, right?
Something like that was the area.
Yeah, okay, that, yeah.
So I can't believe it's been that long.
So, so as a result, we're, we're not all that, uh, used to keeping in compliance with them. It's just the first.
No, we're only, we're only one of two towns in the entire state.
Right, us and Mashpee or something like that, right?
Yeah.
Don't they show it somewhere more than anything?
It allows us to sort of retroactively apply and get those bridges built.
That you get insurance if you're in a.
Yeah. This is the second time we've had to make conforming changes to our bylaws, so.
Is it, you know, is it, I, I know when they redrew the most recent round of the flood maps, just from my own experience, a lot of people are now covered that weren't previously, you know, in, considered in the flood plain. Is it gonna have a dramatic impact locally? You know, are we adding, you know, I mean, how many residential properties are affected by the change?
I don't know for sure. I'd have to look a little closer.
Yeah, I think I have to, I haven't even looked at the memo from the state to see what they actually want us to do.
I know, cause it's a dupe.
Is this right here?
It certainly is, but, you know, by staying compliant, we're, by updating those, people stay current with their flood, national flood insurance.
Cause it gives banks the ability to require them.
Right.
And also it puts them in the position where if the flood insurance program is dictating certain increases in premiums, they're also requiring them, you know, to pay those increases to keep covered.
That can hurt a lot of people also.
But that's already in, that's already in place.
So, so the question.
I don't think it's being tweaked that much from when I first read the, I mean, the, the maps aren't being tweaked that much, are they?
No, no, I think it's, um, it's really, uh.
Not like before.
Right.
I had it on the paper a couple weeks ago, but people saw this.
Yeah, this section right here, I, I think I submitted this with you. Do you, if you guys wanna take a look at it? Like layout.
Yeah, wait on.
Yeah, I've seen it, you know, I mean.
But, yeah, all that's in there, all the.
Heffernan Yard House, looking at around, uh, no, 2500 a year anyhow.
Don't even know that flood insurance. I'm familiar with it. On commercial and residential down the table.
Yeah.
It's not a good scene.
Well, in, in any event, I think we need to start the process to.
We have to do it.
And there'll be a public hearing.
We have to do it. And I think if, if some good zoning, what you're taking out needs to be taken.
Yeah, so they're fairly simple.
And to have that board meet and Kirk's part of that, so. Uh, let's just try, can we knock down a couple of these? We don't necessarily have to do off. We don't have time for all.
Is everyone ready? Might be willing to vote, vote to approve all of them.
We have November 20th. I wanna thank publicly, um, Amy Lyne and Doreen Blowick for, uh, helping us out with minutes and jeans, uh, before we had Kirk. Otherwise we wouldn't have these improvements.
Boy, they really.
Good work ethic.
Yeah, yeah, they're very good. I mean, I didn't find anything wrong, I don't think.
And remember they did these from the DVD, you know?
Right, right.
Yeah, but still it takes time, you know.
That's cruel.
All right, so November 20th, any changes? Again, that was, uh, lieutenant with Anthony Hurley. We had the, uh, site plan review. Cliff, any changes?
No.
No, I'm good too.
These are very detailed. These are good. Uh, we had the Pike Old situation. We had to sign the form names so that they could go on with the sale. The preliminary discussion on Fox Meadow, which is being deferred till they are ready. As Cliff, the detail, I mean, we can't change a conforming to not confirming, uh, the dog daycare. Another one of his quirks in this.
Yeah, well, that was, I think that was inaccurate. It was the summary of the discussion.
Yeah. I'll just point these out cause these are ones that are critical in terms of someone wants to read.
Yes.
And she even put the, uh, the attachments that were cited in the meeting, you know? You know, the letters and things, which is pretty good. I like that, actually. You know, the documents associated with the discussion. All right, so November 20th?
I mean, the agenda usually, the agenda usually outlines what, uh, exhibits are being included in the meeting, right? Then again, some people bring in their own. Yeah, I guess that, no, they don't. I guess you're right. So the minutes, uh, would help to have, to know.
We can do it on the agenda. No, I think, uh.
Well, in this case, uh.
Katrina in the past put those, yeah, but we.
I, I did a separate page this time.
Oh, right.
That has, and I'd probably just draw from that.
You did, yeah, remember you did all the exhibits and the documents?
It was like a separate.
Right, and areas, right, right. So that, if that can make it into the min, minutes, so we all.
Yeah.
We'll have a, uh, recollection of what we looked at.
All right, November 20th?
I'm most appropriate master.
I click second.
Second.
Those are favor.
All right.
Fourth, uh, was, um, sorry. You want more time to read the front? This, um.
Uh, front of the top looks like, uh, the Institute for Savings at Hable Street.
That's Nutter. That's not Chip Federals. Nutter, I believe. Right?
Yeah.
Chip Nutter.
I remember his name being Chip Nutter, yep.
And I think also what you have to put in there, um, Chip Nutter, the architect isn't specific enough. He didn't say the firm, so. Forgot the name of the firm, but it's obviously the application.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, especially the first time that he's mentioned.
Use the new report, but I forget the name of the.
I can't remember either.
So, yeah, Hable Street's incorrectly spelled. Nutter, I think that's correct. She has my name spelled correctly in the, uh, you know, who was present, but she, everywhere else she references it without the, the first end.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is actually me. I'm.
Oh, okay. Uh, and not a big deal, but it's spelled T H R N T O N.
Sorry about that.
You want, you know, I'm gonna do, I'm gonna, um, this is a long one. Do people need more time on this?
No, I'm, I'm good with it. I'm good with it.
Just these, okay, so basically what, these are mainly spelling and these are just.
They're 20, uh, severed for.
Um, the applicant states they appeared before them, but they have not gotten a certificate of appropriateness.
Yeah, I wondered about that, but.
Is there such a thing, that approval?
Certificate appropriateness, that was the language that was used. And.
That what David brought?
That's, 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 that's what they're called in a number of places, but that was the language that was used that, uh, during the meeting, certificate appropriateness.
Okay. Is that something that's more particular to the district commission?
Yeah, yeah. That's, yeah, um, yeah, two, two times I've actually worked with historic preservation. They both use that.
Okay, that's cool. I learned something new every day.
It could be, if, if it turns out, I'll, I'll check with the, I mean, based on, on Rowley's historic preservation, make it that that uses their terminology.
I think it's an appropriate phrase.
Uh, yes.
Why do you have question marks after, uh, when we're interviewing you?
Uh, I tried to go, there was supposed to be, I realized that, you know, they were initially questioned. I was, I, when I put them out, laid them out on the, on the, um, the sheet and then filled in behind, um, they were questions, but in reality they're indirect questions, so they don't take question marks. They take periods. And I tried to go through and like eliminate those.
Oh, that's fine. So, you know, that's fine.
Yeah.
That's a grammatic thing.
Yeah, there's a couple of them there that I missed.
This, this is quite a body of work, I think.
Yeah, it was like.
This must've taken me, I can imagine how long this took.
It's a little while. Once I realized that, that it needed to be done, I actually didn't realize until.
Going forward, are you gonna be taking the minutes, cause there's ones at the meeting, right? So you're not gonna necessarily have to refer back to the DVDs to.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, yeah, I'm gonna take notes and I'll, I'll do the.
Shouldn't have to do this twice.
Yeah.
These meetings.
Yeah.
And Debbie's.
We shouldn't do this long, like, this was actually about a, this was almost like a three hour meeting, I think.
Oh, was it? Let's don't go there, okay?
It was a long meeting.
Debbie's name is spelled wrong, right?
Um, what?
Brian S. Egan?
E A G E N.
It's, um.
I thought that was.
E N G A N.
Is it E?
A N. See, I can, just look at the emails.
Yeah, sorry, uh, okay. E A G A N.
And I, and I just, um, I suggested to Kirk that, you know, he didn't normally have to go into this much detail in minutes. But I think because we're interviewing people and it reflects a very important meeting, a critical meeting, that I don't mind the additional detail in this particular meeting.
Yeah, I thought that was good.
All right. Any other, um. This is when we, Anthony Hurley again. Kind of that, kind of wrestle with the sign. I'm gonna go to correct it and make it in compliance. And Steve's concerned. See, is there enough there? But, uh, your concern was in the previous meeting. We have a lot of space for the term, uh, term length. Uh, let's look at the votes, make sure that, uh, the site plan, this was, uh, five to one, with Steve opposing. That's what it was, right?
Yeah.
Make sure. Oh, that's what I put on the, on his documents, so. All right, that's a ten motion for.
Motion approved minutes up to December 4th, 2013 with the changes, second.
Second by Cliff. Motion by Chris Thorne. All in favor?
Right.
All right. And Jean, uh, there's a couple of things just to fill in on Jean's, uh, Jean's. Uh, they were asking for, uh.
What were we talking about now?
This is, uh, the ninth, we had a short meeting to, uh, actually, um, hire, uh, Kirk. To make the final, uh, determination. So we did, had some time to reflect on, uh, you know, the results of them meeting the interviews. So we didn't rush it that evening, uh, the others. We all said Anthony and just to sign the, uh, his certificate of vote and so forth.
Right, I may not have sent that right in the notes.
Chairman Brian called for motion to approve the site plan for 111. Cliff, please move. Jake Patrol second, four to one, which reflects the past, uh, failure of his, uh.
Yeah, David came in, uh, later, yeah.
The board signed the site plan. We closed the public hearing for the special permit for the eliminated sign. We closed the public hearing, five to zero. Um, did you vote to close that? You, you, you closed the hearing. You just didn't vote for the special permit for the sign either. You were consistent. You didn't vote for the site plan or the sign.
I am voting for him. I say my words, man.
All right.
Yeah, because in the next seven minutes, you voted against the special permit for the sign.
And then we, uh, went through the criteria between the two finalists. Kirk Baker, Heidi Murphy. And we called for a vote for a point around the town planner. Um, and that was also a, a voice, uh, vote, roll call vote, I believe. So anyways, we tied. Am I, it's no unanimous. And what was the vote to adjourn the meeting was, um.
Yeah.
Prime sit.
Yes. I didn't write that down, so she could've called me, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
Motion to accept the December 9th ones?
Sold.
All right, so now it's to December 18th. These were also done by you, Kirk, right?
Uh, you have the 18th, I, I, I'm sorry, you did the, you made the motion, who seconded?
Who seconded? Jean.
I can't, I do it.
Oh.
I'll second the motion to close, uh, to, to prove the minutes.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Mr. Will, we did the vote for the sign, eliminated sign. Um, we scored a one with, uh, Cassie, I suppose. Then we had a discussion, uh, the zoning may not allow the, at this time for the, uh, baseball cage.
I don't have that meeting.
You have that?
I don't have the 18th, I don't have the, uh, 18th.
The minutes from, but, uh.
Oh.
You know?
No.
The minutes from the 18th.
The, uh.
All right, then we'll.
Those will be on air, right?
We can wait till next meeting.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
All right, if you don't have them, I want you to have them, so. There's no sense in, I'm not gonna rush minutes, they're quick.
No.
All right, um, your hour.
Oh, yeah. Uh, I was actually going to see if, um, say, like, right now I'm doing three days a week, Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday. I was wondering if I could do a three day Monday, because you guys exhibited, or at that previous meeting, you had said that Monday was preferred day. So do a Monday, Wednesday and Thursday, uh, basically same hours that I'm doing now, a seven hour Monday. Or I could do an eight hour Monday, uh, which have, like, a seven hour, eight hour Monday, um, uh, seven, eight hour Wednesday.
What would be your, like, office hours on that, on Monday?
Same as it is now. I would do nine, nine till 12:30, uh, for all, all three days. So that would be roughly half the number of the 22 hours. And then, of course, I'm here all the time. If somebody comes in, even after office hours.
Or by appointment.
Yeah, or by appointment, I'm, I'm still available. The only thing is the office hours, if I need to go out for a site visit, I would. The only thing with the office hours, if I need to go out for a site visit, I would do that outside the office hours.
Sounds good to me.
So that's.
And the main reasons.
Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday?
Yeah, Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and I, the reason is, at one point I mentioned to try to do a four-day, I want to leave open a Tuesday, a Wednesday, just so, like, because I had, I gave up my other part-time job, you know, I just couldn't work out the hours, they, they wanted me there five days a week in the mornings, and it just wasn't going to work, so I gave that, I had to give that up, and so, and the off chance I'm going to be looking at part-time or consulting kind of work on those two off days.
Then you need a body of time for that kind of work.
Yeah.
But as long as Wednesday is a day.
Yeah.
That's a critical day to be around, because that's when our meetings are.
Oh, yeah, like today.
You say over, okay.
Yeah.
And you know, and sometimes if that, if it's a really long Wednesday, you have the comp time thing, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Does that find, anybody have any opposition to that?
Yeah, that's great.
Now, are you getting up to speed with the town accountant and so forth, trying to, Larry, I mean, on the budget stuff?
Yeah, that's, that's probably one thing I need to spend a little more time on.
That's fine, I'm going to give you some time to, you know, I know you got to get one printout here.
That was the latest appropriation report that we got.
So we still have 1740, 72 left in the expenses?
Yeah.
And we still have 5484 left in the Larry account.
Yeah, which actually I do have some.
And we just took in 500 today for Morn, right?
Right.
I'm sorry.
No, that's coming from, that's the payment.
Oh, I thought, I thought I should check the book out today.
You did.
Yeah.
No, but this Larry, this is Larry doing work for us specifically.
Oh, okay, I thought it all went into the consulting fund account.
We still, we still have a budget because, you know, we have things like, you know, like unfinished projects we need Larry to work on, like Sheehan Estates, that kind of thing.
Each project has its own account that the developer has to.
Right, and those aren't reflected here, if you want that printed out, you can do that as well next meeting.
Yeah.
Well, no, it's important to.
It is important, but I think it's.
Because then you'll see what unfinished projects are.
Project as it comes up in front of us, know where they stand with the budget.
But you're getting more familiar with that, Larry has, Larry knows what's, he, along with the town, keeps track of projects that still, there's a lot of money that people don't, I hate having all this money in limbo, we should either return it or finish, or, we need to look at that, and I think, or prioritize, you know, we started that with Sheehan, so, you know, these projects have all this money that's unfinished, so.
Were you just saying that people from this board work?
No, 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 I'm just saying that sometimes when developers leave money in their accounts, they never come back and get it back, it's kind of like when the state has the unclaimed funds.
Do you have a two people from this board do work, and the board pays them?
No.
No, 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 no.
Want in?
No.
Get in.
No, no, the only project. All right, thank you.
That is.
Kirk.
And.
I'll leave it on you, Brian.
Let's see, I think it was one that I needed to, oh, payroll, payroll.
That would be good.
I just needed to get signatures, I figured we'd go and do it today, and to call you guys, and.
This is the first set of spring?
In terms of our next meeting, do you want to?
That's why I brought my calendar.
I would suggest that we, we shoot for the end of February for the zoning public hearing, I don't know if there's anything that needs to be done before then.
Can I?
May 27th.
There were, there were a couple of, like, things that were happening that, you know, Sandy Patrickin had, like, you know, his project, that if he wants to do a site plan.
He's going to need some time, your 50th, and I'm going to be talking, Sandy wants to change the configuration of his addition, it's in the.
Oh, it's less.
Yeah, so, I'm working with Kirk, I mean, he's going to come before us, so.
And there was, actually, the, and I had mentioned, I think, that T-Mobile had, they were talking about submitting for two cell tower co-locations.
Yeah, but they haven't submitted.
Actually, they submitted today.
How long ago?
It came in just today.
Well, it's a site plan review, so.
Yeah, site plan. Six, 30 days to get it on, on to the.
Where do they want to put them?
Sixty for the decision.
No, it's nine.
Ninety.
Ninety.
Say thirty to get on.
Sixty to.
Sixty to get on.
Okay, I was.
Sixty, sixty to open the public hearing.
Yeah, yeah.
Ninety for the decision.
Anyways, we don't, it's irrelevant because we do it before that anyways, so, this is up for prospector?
I'm sorry.
Prospector.
Do they have locations that they want to put them at already, or is this just for application right now?
Yeah.
Yeah, what the addresses were, 594 Main Street and 124 Hable Street.
Right.
What is, the Hable Street one is owned by, this property owned by, by Rowley, Town of Rowley.
By the town, well, that's.
The other one is, the other one's a junkyard, right?
Yeah, yeah.
What junkyard?
Actually, got Sabot, you know, the one that won't root winning.
Oh, winning, yeah, that's where they want to put the other one?
Yeah, they're looking, these are.
They're modifying antennas.
They're doing it in kind, they're, they're taking antennas that exist and replacing them with new antennas.
I'd like to see them both going down properties, what I would like to see.
Which one?
Both of them.
I know.
I'd like to see them both going down property versus, versus see the town generate some income from that.
Well, you'll get your crack at that when they come in. Is the 12th bad?
Of February?
Yeah. Two weeks from now?
It's fine with me, because I think it's probably, it's too early for zoning hearing, so we could just have a.
When do you mean?
Tuesday, but probably by the, you know, it needs to be advertised.
When is site, site, so you need to advertise, so the 19th will be advertised?
I don't know, I think it'd probably be towards maybe the last Wednesday in February, it'd probably be.
26th?
Something we could choose.
And we need to meet twice?
Yeah.
So we need to meet the 12th and the 26th, is that all right?
Sure.
Two meetings.
Well, Sandy, do we need to meet the 12th?
Not that we need to meet the 12th.
No, we don't.
Well, you can always call the meeting off.
All right, tentatively, so, okay, yeah, I would consult with, you know.
12th and the 12th.
But I may call it off because.
The 26th?
There's no sense in doing like two things, okay?
What's the other one, 26th?
26th.
Okay, sounds like a plan.
I'll make a motion to adjourn unless there's something else.
Oh, second?
Second.
A favor?
Aye.
Tonight, thank you. Do you sign?